I call the leaders. Michael Woburn, everyone. The E-Council meeting is on the third Tuesday every month at seven thirty just for these information, but it's not being here at all. Also, we work from a prepared agenda. Everybody wants an agenda located on your wall over here if you don't have one. Any citizens who wish to address the council, you may sign up and we'd be glad to hear you during the public opinion. Also, I'd like to recognize members of the media, Kate David Nees, Kate Lane, Kate Howard. Anybody else who needs to be here? Item two, invocation of Mr. Gary Cobb, pastor of Southern United Church. If you could come forward, we appreciate it. And that will be followed by pledge of allegiance and amen. Please stand for the information.
That is great. Our God and our strong God, we thank you for this day that you give to us all the blessings that have come with it. We thank you for the generosity to which you just could. Thank you, Father, for blessing our community and our city. We pray to receive blessings upon the council person that you will bless them as they can do no business could do. We ask that you bless everyone who was involved in it, that you would give us what we need to watch strong. Thank you, Father, for your love of our community and take care of us. Bless us and keep us in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Professor Cobb, we appreciate you coming, Tom. Item four, proclamations and special presentations. First was fall litter sweep proclamation. Whereas the North Carolina Department of Transportation organizes an annual fall state lot roadside cleanup to ensure clean and beautiful roads in North Carolina and whereas the fall 2013 litter sweep roadside cleanup will take place September twenty first through October fifth and encourages local governments and communities, civic and professional groups, businesses, churches, schools, families, and individual citizens to participate in the Department of Transportation cleanup by sponsoring and organizing the local roadside cleanups. And whereas adopted highway volunteers, Department of Transportation employees, Department of Correction inmates, and community service workers, local government agencies, community leaders, civic and community organizations, businesses, churches, schools, environmentally concerned citizens conduct annual cleanups during the litter sweep and may receive certificates of appreciation for their participation and whereas the great natural beauty of our state and a clean environment are sources of great pride of all, pride of the home of North Carolinians, attracting tourists and aiding in recruiting new industries and whereas the cleanup will increase awareness of the need for cleaner roadsides, emphasize the importance of not littering, and encourage recycling of solid waste and whereas the full 2013 litter sweep cleanup will celebrate the twenty-fifth anniversary of the North Carolina Highway Program and its four thousand four hundred volunteer groups that donate their labor and time year round to keep our roadsides clean. And whereas the litter sweep cleanup will be a part of educating the children of this great state regarding the importance of a clean environment to the quality of life in North Carolina. And therefore, I, Wayne O'Toole Senior, may proclaim the city of Eden hereby proclaim September twenty first through October fifth, 2013, as fall litter week. Time in the city of Eden and carries the citizens taking active role in making our community cleaner. Second proclamation, National Adopted Shelter Dog Month. Whereas shelter dogs hold a special place in the hearts of all animal lovers and whereas approximately eight to ten million companion animals enter animal shelters nationwide each year approximately three to four million unethanized. And whereas most times animals were given up due to the owner's irresponsibility or lack of initiative. In a recent study by the National Council on Pet Population and Policy, the top reason people surrender their dogs to shelters is due to the behavioral problems followed by housing situations, incompounded ability to family's lifestyle, and found because the dog didn't live up to the owner's expectations. And whereas all shelter dogs need a living owner and a safe, happy home, many shelter adoptees even say that shelter pets know that their new owners save them and therefore have a special bond with their new parents. Shelter dog fast facts according to AnimalShelter.org. Eight to ten million dogs and cats enter shelters each year. Three to four million dogs and cats euthanized by shelters each year. Three to four million dogs and cats adopted from shelters each year. Four to six thousand animal shelters are in the United States. Twenty-five percent of purebred dogs are found in shelters. A female dog in our offspring can produce sixty-seven thousand dogs in six years. Between six hundred thousand and seven fifty thousand dogs and cats reclaimed by owners each year from animal shelters. And therefore, I, Wayne O'Toole Senior, may proclaim hereby proclaim the month of October as official Adopted Shelter Month in the city of Eden to raise awareness about the many shelter dogs out there waiting for homes. Whether you plan to adopt a new companion for yourself or not, bringing the discussion on shelter dogs to the forefront can make a major difference in the clients of many of these animals. There are still plenty of ways to help at your local shelter. Volunteering, donating pet food, offering office supplies to your local shelter, or cubane society can help alleviate the suffering of animal population. The next one is National Disability Employment Awareness Month proclamation. National Disability Employment Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas workplaces welcoming talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. And whereas in this spirit, the city of Eden, North Carolina, is recognizing National Disability Employment Awareness Month this October to raise awareness about disability employment issues and celebrate the meaningful and varied contributions of people with disabilities. And whereas activities during this month will reinforce the value and talent people with disabilities add on workplaces and communities and affirm the Eden, North Carolina's commitment to an inclusive community. And therefore, I, Wayne O'Toole Senior, may proclaim to hereby proclaim October 2013 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. In so doing, I call upon employers, schools, and other community organizations in Eden, North Carolina to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities and to advance this important message that people with disabilities are equal to the task throughout the year. Appreciate you. Thank you very much. Whereas the city of Eden is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our community. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern by the local and nationally and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires killed more than two thousand three hundred eighty people in the United States in 2012 according to the National Fire Protection Association. And whereas the kitchen is the leading area of origin of the home fires and those kitchen fires are caused by cooking. On average, there are roughly three thousand reported kitchen fires per year in the United States that true done. So be careful in the kitchen. Whereas Eden residents should stay in the kitchen or frying food on stove top, keep a three-foot hid-free zone around cooking areas, and keep anything that can catch fire away from stove tops. And whereas residents are planning to practice a home fire escape plan or more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas the city of Eden's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas the city of Eden's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2013 Fire Prevention Week theme, Prevent Kitchen Fires, effectively served to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Therefore, I, Wayne O'Toole Senior, may proclaim the city of Eden to hereby proclaim October sixth through twelfth, 2013, Fire Prevention Week throughout the city and encourage all citizens of Eden to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week 2013 and to support many public safety activities and efforts of the city of Eden's fire emergency services. As a written show to council members, hey, in turn, absent all of the council members of city management, city attorney, or president. Item six, set the meeting agenda on any additions or deletions to the agenda. Since there's not any, is there a motion to accept it?
Make a motion to accept the agenda.
Is that second? Any discussion? All those opposed say aye. All those opposed, no. Agenda is set. Item seven, no public hearings. Item eight, requesting petitions of citizens. Jeanne Wood, give us your name and address and who you represent.
Thank you, Wayne. Jeanne Wood, 237 Rose Street, New York, Carolina. In May, Wayne and I presented our summer plan for Get Fit Eden. I bring greetings from the Eden Chamber of Commerce, Board of Directors, staff, and members with updated information on our program. You may recall the structure of the program. During the months of June, July, and August, participants were encouraged to be active three times a week for at least thirty minutes each time. Tracking the activity and submitting a completed tracking card earned them the opportunity to enter a grand prize drawing. Registration for the program commenced right here at the May City Council meeting and throughout May and early June at strategic partners throughout our city. At present, there are over four hundred people registered. Participants received a Get Fit Eden t-shirt compliments of Gil and Activewear and our sponsors. To fuel success, weekly community walks were held at the Garden of Eden Senior Center and Smith River Greenway. Additionally, on Tuesday evening, walks began at Freedom Park in June and then moved to Old Leaksville and Draper Village for July and August. Walks were hosted by city officials, thank you, as well as chamber and community volunteers. Additionally, Carla Huffman set up a rotating try for free schedule that included opportunities before, that you could try it before you buy it at our local fitness centers and yoga studios. So let me tell you about some of the successes. Elaine, she was the first to turn in her completed Get Fit Eden card. And we talked a little bit about the grand prize and she was excited about the opportunity that she might win. And I suggested that perhaps since her card was the first in the fishbowl, that maybe it would be the first out of the fishbowl and she'd be the winner. But then she looked at me and she said she was already a winner because of the program. Tell you about Shirley. Shirley's seventy years old and she's lost ninety pounds following Weight Watchers Healthy Living Program. She recently testified at a Weight Watchers meeting that she'd not made an exercise commitment until Get Fit Eden encouraged her to set the activity goal of exercising three times a week. The activity boosted her summer weight loss and has allowed her to tackle the big heel in her neighborhood. Tony and Kim were walking regularly and experiencing a weight loss. Through the Get Fit Eden program, they spurred their weight loss, tried out the Y, and then decided to join and become regular members. Donna has struggled with several chronic illnesses and her career, she cares for others and she's put her health and wellness on the back burner. So her doctor gave her the okay to participate in the summer Get Fit Eden program. In addition to losing thirty pounds this summer, she enjoyed the free weekend with Y. It rekindled an old love for swimming. And so she joined the Y and she loves Stillwater Aerobics Program. Hope, Hope's a young professional in our community who wasn't reaching her physical activity potential. Through Get Fit Eden, she's set summer goals, encouraged other family members to walk with her, and joined CrossFit. How about that? CrossFit. She's led community walks and she wants to help with the future of the program. Also, I have a letter saying I want to thank the chamber and city for initiating the Get Fit program. Thanks also for the t-shirt. I've been thinking of starting an exercise program but kept procrastinating. This was just the nudge I needed to get me started. Jim and I didn't always walk with the group since we're seniors and not as sure-footed as we once were. We prefer to walk in the track at Freedom Park. That felt a little safer for us. We walk at least eight miles a week and lots of times ten miles a week. Thus far, we've walked seventy-five miles. Not only do I feel better, but I've lost twelve pounds this summer. Thank you for your consideration for the citizens of Eden. Best wishes for continued success. Sincerely, Peggy. So, thank you to the city of Eden for your partnership with Get Fit Eden. Thank you, Charlie, your pro tem, Wayne Tuggle, for his commitment to the program. Thank you to Mike Doherty for supporting my crazy ideas and somehow helping me with logistics to make my dreams possible. Thank you to the financial and in-kind support of Gil, Dan, Eden Drug, Wayne Tuggle, Donald Turner, Jim Burnett, Brad Corcoran, Mike Doherty, Deanna Hunt, Carla Huffman, Eden Parks and Rec Department, Tori Lord, Bella Hudson, Dee Sawyer, Pete Crouch, Lynn Dyer, Teresa Lee, Kelly Thuleam, and to the owners and staff of the Eden Y, Body Fit, Fast Fit, and Cross Fit. Right now, we're in the process of collecting those completed activity cards from participants and will have the drawing for the i-pad this Friday at six forty-five at River Fest Stage One. So please come out and join us for that celebration. A Greek proverb states, "A society grows great when old men plant trees whose shade they know they shall never sit in." I'm certainly not implying that any of us are old men, but we planted some trees this summer and although we sat in some shade, we still have a lot of work ahead. We're working on the next phase of Get Fit Eden and hope to encourage even more residents to be and stay active, healthy, and well. Many studies have proven a link from the health of the community to its economic potential. For continued growth, economic development is very important to our city, our chamber and its members, our business community, and our residents. We want Eden to be the best small town in America. So let's continue planting trees.
Jeanne, what's the next step in this?
Sir?
What's the next step in Get Fit Eden?
We gotta, we gotta plant it.
Okay, I just wanted, oh, we've got like a race start and thank you and all the members of the committee and all the people that participated. I think it's a terrific program and you can't do better than trying to help the health of the people in the city. Thank you very much. Item number nine, unfinished business. We don't have any new business. Recommendation to accept a bid on 1291 South Avenue, Disturbance.
1291 South Avenue happens to be a piece of property from which we demolished a house a number of years ago. We took it to auction, the city ended up owning it, and we got a request about it this summer. We went down to find out that the next door neighbors had been using it like it was theirs. And so that prompted an interest from them to bid on it so they could keep their things on there, that sort of thing. We did have another bidder and the final bid was a thousand dollars. Obviously, you can tell from the memo you got that we spent more than that to take the house down. But I do think that it is important that we get these properties back in active tax rolling and the city gets to stop mowing them. Does the city have any questions?
And we've had this property now for what, I believe you told me, three years maybe?
Yes, sir. And the person will have to pay the taxes.
I think it's time to get rid of it. Any questions, anyone? So it's time to get rid of it. I think it's a good idea. We've left a deal of bottles and buckets for it. It's just something else that we will have to take care of and then possibly somebody else will use it and do their benefit. Is there a motion?
Motion to say 1291 South Avenue.
They're second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those opposed say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. No reports from staff, consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second? Any discussion? All those opposed say aye. Item thirteen, announcements. Active report for September and October 2013, Ms. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Tuggle, city council, city manager, city attorney. Just want to do a brief update for the rest of September and first part of October. We have tournaments scheduled every weekend down at Freedom Park. I know the city of Eden has a busy weekend with River Fest coming up on Friday and Saturday, Friday and Saturday. But we also have the National Softball Association Fast Fit Girl Softball Tournament this weekend down at Freedom Park on Saturday and Sunday, so please come out for that. The following weekend, we have a guide game softball tournament at September twenty eighth to twenty ninth. Then we have another NSA tournament October fifth and sixth, and then an IFA tournament October twelfth and thirteenth. And our monthly concert in the park series will wrap up the activity for September at Freedom Park. We will have the Trumpson Highway Band playing at Eden Kwanzaa Theater from six thirty to eight thirty. And this event is free to the public and we want to encourage everyone to come out. We want everyone to come out and support our youth in our community. Our youth football program gets underway on Monday down at Freedom Park. We have both the boys playing as well as the girls cheerleading. So you know, these are our leaders of tomorrows to come out and support them. And they'll be playing down at Freedom Park through the end of October. And with October coming up, we have a lot of volunteers working on our haunted trail. This is a program that is done strictly by volunteers and all the funds that are raised for that goes back to the city to help support our youth program. So that program will be out on Friday and Saturday nights beginning October fourth. It will be out every Friday and Saturday night through the first weekend in November. Thank you.
Appreciate you, Tom. River Fest, see?
Good evening. I think we have what is going to be an incredible festival planned for this weekend. This is our tenth annual. I'm just going to give you some numbers of some things that we're having. We have a hundred and sixty-four artists and crafters and civic clubs that will be along Washington Street that is actually sold out and we have no more real estate left for that.
Is it a motion we've ever made?
It is. It is. We have twenty-eight food and beverage vendors coming. We have ten bands on two stages and we have twenty-five plus exhibits and special features. Some of those include the soccer colleagues, the Carolina Raptor Center, the Cold Blood Encounters, models of River Fest, water wars. We have a five K that's going to kick us off on Saturday morning. Antique engine exhibit, the Danter Basin Association's doing a really neat thing in Pocket Park. They're going to be talking about the importance and the uses for rain barrels and they're going to have one on display and the public can come and help paint this rain barrel and it's going to be raffled off during the festivals. That's something different. We have extreme inflatables and when I say extreme, I mean extreme. You won't be able to miss those. The Tribe of Bloodhounds Flex Line, a gravity ball, the Scribe Exchange, we're real proud of that. That is an art institution out of Durham that's come in and they bring bins and bins of neat reusable items. And the public, kids and older folks as well, can go in and create something that you can take home with you for River Fest. The Gem Sluice, we have the Beer Garden, the Middle Course Pasting Room, of course, Middle Cores is our top sponsor again as always. Real proud of the money that we have raised this year. This is community driven. The community has paid for this. We didn't really get any notes this year from last year. We had a few new ones come on, so real proud of what we've done there. I also want to thank my fellow city employees. It takes a lot of people to make this a success, that it is. And most, every department in the city, some way or another, touches this festival either before, during, or after. And I think we pride ourselves on having a safe, efficient, clean festival area and people remember that. You don't see that everywhere. And we have a slew of people, a great team, that helps make that possible. One person or two people can't make this happen. And I will, we will do something very nice for all those people afterwards and we're trying to think of something different this year, but to show our appreciation for that. We have Live Remote from Mike 3.1, The Wolf will be here on Friday night from five to seven. They'll actually introduce The Breakfast Club. And I will say, our entertainment is a huge draw. We have a large number of people that have called from Raleigh this year and that helps us target our marketing for next year to know what we're doing is working. So our hotels and motels are getting booked. We have vendors coming from five, no, six states, if you count those three, seven states, Tennessee, Florida, Ohio, Virginia, South Carolina, Georgia, and many, many states from North Carolina represented. So I think we're in for a fun, exciting weekend. I hope all of you come. And again, I want to thank everybody who helped do this. Jeanne and her team at the chamber took on the welcome booth this year, which is a huge commitment to have volunteers to man that from five to ten on Friday and ten to ten on Saturday. So I'm going to thank them especially for that.
Cindy, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to say, I think when you hear Johnny talk about partial recreation, all the tournaments he put on during the year and Cindy talks about all of this, it is a tremendous amount of work. I'm always amazed at how you guys can put all this together and coordinate and organize it. And you have to be there to see. I love walking Cindy's office a day or two before River Fest and you can't see her, all piles of stuff and people she's called. But, and Johnny, I know it's the same way with all the tournaments. So thank you guys, all the hard work you do. I also have to thank the C and D Department, Engineering Streets Department. When these water mains break and the, and the time that you guys put in, I stopped by and talked to Tammy the other day, just, we lost close to a million gallons of water or maybe more. This stuff happened at like one and two in the morning. And guess who's always up at nine trying to take care of things when everybody else is asleep? These are people working for the city. I'm always amazed when people up and complaining about the city when they got a call. Guess who they called? The city. Was it Police Department, Fire Department, C and D, Engineering, whatever. What a great bunch of people you guys are. Plus you had deadlines, you had to have that street up and running again just the state saying you had to have it ready by when today, by today. They give you deadlines on getting it done and they don't care how many different people you have to call to try to get it done. They want it straight up again. So again, thank you for you guys. And one other item for the good of the cause, anybody up here want to have anything else to say or any comments on anything?
Well, I would just echo what you said about what's going on and all the other departments as well. You know, they're all busy, there's a lot going on and we owe our thanks to all the department heads for their leadership and even the routine things, there are a lot, there's still a lot that's going on and we thank you for what you're doing.
Chief Burdo, I'd like to say something to you. Sunday, there was a little crash out in front of my home and a couple of metal boxes knocked down and a patch by our neighbor mine said, hey, since you called the police department, they're not going to do anything. And I thought, well, right then, I know what I'm going to do. I was going to call the police department, I was going to make, make sure that PD came down and helped them out. I had saved him five. And I had saved him in five minutes, the car was there and I almost said whoever that officer was, that they could go down and say anything about it. That was a mighty nice gesture by the man doing his job and your dispatcher. And the little things that we do for our community is sometimes maybe like to look long enough real quick in the air for a reason. And I just hope that it was seen by the neighborhood.
Anyone else? Supposed to, to a jury?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All those opposed say aye. All those opposed, no.